Mike not here?
Is that?
Mike not here?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't think he is.
I'm very sure.
Oh, is it? No.
Welcome to the Oxford Area School District Board of Directors' regular meeting. Today is February 22, 2022. It is slightly after 7:00 p.m. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Kenny.
Ms. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Tyre.
Here.
Ms. Dean.
Here.
Ms. King.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Tinker.
Here.
Mr. Blessington.
Present.
All present, be informed.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. A privilege of the agenda. It resolves with the Oxford Area Board of Directors hereby appers February 22, 2022, agenda as presented. Do I have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any public comment concerning items on the agenda? Ms. Warren?
My name is Jennifer Warren, and I reside in that township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I wish to comment on Agenda Item 5E, the Health and Safety Plan. Revising this document is well within your rights, and given the current state of the pandemic, it may be warranted. I do, however, have concerns about the extensively re- revisions and whether they put Oxford Area School Districts allotted $6.4 million SRO3 funds in jeopardy. Failing to receive those funds would be extremely detrimental to the district and its residents, and here is why. Pennsylvania relies more heavily than most other states on local taxes, property taxes, instead of state funds to fund public education. This practice works well in communities with robust tax bases, where communities can easily raise the needed funding. However, in those communities who lack a robust tax base, like Oxford, the needed funds cannot be raised even though a very high local tax effort may be used. According to Professor Matthew Kelly from Pennsylvania State University, in a report he created for the court for the current school funding lawsuit, an adequacy gap exists for numerous Pennsylvania school districts. An adequacy gap is defined as the gulf between the funds districts are able to raise and the Pennsylvania benchmark for the fundings needed to educate students to state standards. Oxford Area School District ranks in the 100 most under-resourced school districts in Pennsylvania, and according to Dr. Kelly, our adequacy gap is over $29 million short of the Pennsylvania benchmark for fund the funding that is needed to educate the most students to the basic adequacy. Or, put another way, the average Oxford student is short-changed just over $7,000 per student annually. The only other school district with a higher adequacy gap than the entire Commonwealth is Reddick. I want to stress that this is not due to any fault of the district. This is just how Pennsylvania funds its schools. Furthermore, our status in the low-well district allows for our Act One index to consistently be adjusted higher than the state Act One index. For the upcoming 22-23 school year, our adjusted index is the highest Act One index in Chester County. So, in other words, local property taxes can, and some would argue should, be raised higher than other districts in an attempt to close somewhere the gap. Given these two realities, the $6.4 million in additional funding would be extremely beneficial to our district. Now, I have not read the proposed revisions you are voting on tonight, as they are not made public. So, I don't know how much they change the document in the end. But I've listened to board members discuss the revisions at previous meetings, and I've heard threats leveled at the board by some in our community if drastic changes are not made. Consequently, during the discussion of the Agenda item tonight, I would like to hear clearly stated answer to the following question: Do these revisions in any way pose a threat to Oxford Area School District receiving SRO3 funds? If the answer is no, then I have no more questions. But if the answer is yes, I would like for board members who support these revisions to tell the taxpayers in this room, watching live at home and on video later, how you propose to fund $6.4 million so the burden of losing those funds is not borne on the back of the taxpayers through drastically higher taxes or students through a dramatic cut in programming or staffing, which will result in further learning loss. And finally, since test scores have been recently put at the front and center, I would like to hear how you propose to work on raising test scores when you are voting essentially, voting away $6.4 million, at least 20% of which was to be set aside specifically for learning loss. In closing, if the revisions to the Health and Safety Plan jeopardize the disbursement of the $6.4 million allotted to Oxford Area School District through the American Recovery Plan SRO3 funds, I urge board members to reject those revisions, especially if there's no plan in place to offset the lost funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. It resolves with the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby appers the minutes of the January 11, 2022 work session and the January 18, 2022 regular meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Superintendent's report, Mr. Woods.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Dr. Margaret Phillips-Jones, Assistant Superintendent, to give her report.
Thank you, Superintendent Woods, members of the board, members of the community, and educators. It's my pleasure to provide the district with the report. Tonight, as we have done every year, I will be providing the district with a look at our standardized data based on the PSSA returns as well as the KESDAM return. Looking at the data, I do want to set the stage here that the standardized data is reviewed every year with the exception of 2020. As you recall, there was no assessment in 2020 due to the pandemic. To explore the educational gap that was created by the interruption of additional instructional practice, we are taking a look at the data from 2015 through 2019 and also data from 2021. Keep in mind that the data from 2021 cannot be appropriately compared to 2015 to 2019 because participation rate was reduced in our district by 15 to 26% of students due to their inability to come into the school to sit for the assessment. All other years have a limited absence set by the state at no more than 5%. I'd like to present some data through fast facts that were pulled from our PDE in our Pennsylvania Department of Education Future Ready Index to speak to that, to the district. All right, to begin, looking at this fast fact from PDE, every year, we are given the fast facts from PDE as to what our economic situation is within the district. The Oxford Area School District currently has a low economic enrollment of nearly 39% of District Y. Jordan Bank, our kindergarten center, has nearly 46% of the student population listed as low economic. Elk Ridge and Nottingham have nearly 42% of the student enrollment recognized as low economic, with Pensgrove at nearly 39% low economic and the Oxford Area High School at nearly 33%. The state identifies low economic as economically disadvantaged and looks at the progress of this subgroup in relationship to the total student population's progress. We will see this later as we move through the data. I do want to call to your attention as well, I'd like to call to retention Advisory that was put out by PSEA, which is the Pennsylvania School Educators Association Advisory. To begin our review, I'd like to remind everyone that in 2015, the state PDE aligned the assessment to the PA Core standards. This resulted in a more rigorous assessment than the previous years. In addition to the change in the assessment, PDE, or the state, also changed the scores in the fourth proficiency levels, referred to as the cut scores, therefore making it less attainable to reach the higher levels. This resulted in a drop in proficiency measures for all schools across the state in 2015. The slide references the PSCA, as I said, Pennsylvania Educators Association, advisory, who explained the difference in scores prior to 2015. I call your attention to the last sentence in this advisory. The last sentence states, "The new PSSAs and related COTS explicitly designed to be more rigorous, making it noticeably harder for students to achieve advanced and proficient scores on the new PSSA in 2015 than on the previous test administered in 2014." And now, I'd like to continue that advisory to explain these, the PA Core standards. And again, the last statement of this paragraph in your advisory explains why the 2014 year and prior is not comparable to 2015 and after. Simply, they are two very different tests based on different standards. And you can see that in the last statement. The PSSA scores from 2014 and 15 are not comparable because the student proficiency rates are derived from two very different tests that are based on two different sets of standards. I'd like to keep that in mind as we move forward to look back our data. Again, I mentioned to you that we are looking at data from 2015 through 2019 to look at the trends that we were accomplishing, accomplishing during that time. The PSSAs are first administered in grade three. Grade three scores are also attributed to grade two because that is the preparation year for grade three. We can see that all cohorts of grade three fall below the state standard in ELA. Yet, we continue to grow the students' achievement. Remember, 2020 form can also not be used as comparison because the participation rate of our students is much less. We can see the size of the student population in 2019 is at 236 students, compared to 2021 at 197 students. The difference in the number of students doesn't impact the statistical relationship for the percentage of achievement. In addition to the ELA, we look at the subgroups. Our district studies the subgroups of all of the student population. The state identifies four subgroups for Oxford. That means the number of students. That means that this particular grade, every grade that is identified under these subgroups has a minimum of 40 students to qualify for a report in each of these subgroups. Not all schools across the state have subgroups. If you do not have 40 students, they would fall into those particular categories in that particular grade. Here's the data for our subgroups as identified by PDE. They are IEP, meaning students that have an individualized education plan; EL, for students that are English learners; ED, what they term economically disadvantaged; and HU, historically underperforming students. You can see, based on this data that is being presented here in our grade three subgroup, that we are growing our students. Grade three math, again. Under the state average, there's continued work to be done in grades eight to three to bring the students to a higher level to be equal and above the state average. Green, again, on this slide, is the state, and blue is the district. What we have found is that our students in kindergarten, as reported by the administration, as the teachers, and looking at their data, comes in, the students come in, not yet prepared for kindergarten. So, keep in mind that we are to move those students by grade three to be leveled with students across the state. We look at grade three subgroups. Again, they're growing achievement levels of each subgroup as identified by PDE. Grade four, ELA. ELA, I apologize, English Language Arts. By grade four, the district advances the English Language Art achievement for students, and we begin to surpass the state average. We now look at ELA grade four subgroups. Again, we can see the subgroups of the student population identified by the state, and we can see that we are growing the students as we move through the years. Keep in mind, each of these subgroups and each of these groupings by year is a different cohort of students. Math grade four, it lies behind the state, and in 2015 and 2018, it surpasses the state average. So, we look at factors that influence or affect cohorts, and that is the preparation and the composition of the students, meaning how well are they prepared getting into that grade? And what do they come with, what averages they come with? The staffing, whether we had teachers retire out, whether we have a teacher that is taking the lead, whether we have absence or changes in staffing, our instructional delivery, as well as our curriculum and our resources. Moving forward to math grade four subgroups, again, we take a look at the math subgroups and how they are progressing. And grade science, grade four. Grade four and grade eight are the two grades that are assessed in the elementarys in science. And we can see that this is the first time science is tested. The standards, again, will be changing, so we'll be addressing curriculum to change to address the science standards. So, we write in the curriculum to align them to the standards in science. Grade five, ELA. By grade five, students are close to the state average and surpass the state average significantly. As you can see, in 2019, 70.5% of our students were proficient or advanced in ELA by grade five. We look at the grade five subgroups. Again, we can look at how are our students performing? And I'm sure you can see, if you can see the key as well. The blue is the students that have IEPs. The orange are the students with English learners. The gray is our economically disadvantaged student population, and the yellow is the historically underperforming. And I've carried that through all of our slides for your ease of view. When we look at grade five in math, they're near the state average, and they significantly surpass the state average in multiple years. Again, our group of subgroups, math five, achievement data identified by PDE. Again, our group of subgroups, math five, achievement data identified by PDE. Then we move to grade six, English Language Arts. You can see over the, this thread of time, ELA is significantly and consistently above the state average in grade six, reaching proficiency levels of nearly 77% of the students in a given year. Our ELA subgroups at grade six, once again, they continue to grow in achievement for all of our subgroups. Math at grade six hovers around the state average and surpasses the state average. Math grade six subgroups, we look at the proficiency levels and look to provide additional services to all the students, particularly if we see an area of subgroup that is not performing to the level that we would need to see them perform. Grade seven ELA falls slightly below the state average, with one year above the state We then look at the grade seven subgroup, and we identify areas that we would like to make sure that we're improving, and areas that are growing satisfactorily. Grade seven math, it falls below and at times above the state average. Our subgroups, again, we look at for grade seven in math. Looking at grade eight, grade eight falls consistent with the state average and also surpasses the state average for grade eight in English Language Arts. Once again, we look at the subgroups. And keep in mind, we analyze this data every year with every administrator and the administrators with their teachers to look at how we best can meet the needs of all students. Again, grade eight, math, below, above, and with the state averages, dependent on the Again, the subgroups in grade eight math. This is the next year that we test science, grade eight, second time that the students would be seeing the science assessment. And once again, those standards will be changing, and we'll be addressing that in curriculum. This next slide I put together so you could take a look, as well as our administrators, at the state and Oxford 2019 English Language Arts and Math performance. If you looked at that first cluster of groupings, that is the state performance for grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Three being the green, through the blue being eight. The next grouping is Oxford, and you can see that Oxford surpasses the state. It continues to move up in grade from three to four, from four to five, and it stays well above in six. Then we do drop in seven, and stay even with the state in eight, in the English Language Arts. That third column, cluster of columns, is again, the state, that's the state math, and that's grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, again. And you can see the state has a step down decline from grade three through state, grade eight. The district does not. The district advances in grade five, it stays up here in grade six, and then in grade seven and eight. Eight is consistent with the state. Now that's 2019. I also included this slide for 2021, not because we can compare them, but the whole purpose of the data review was to look at the gap from 2020 and what the district needs to do to be able to move our students forward. And you can see in 2021, how the gap in time has affected particularly our middle school. Looking at ELA in our second as compared to the state, again, our grade four, our grade six, our grade five are exceeding this in ELA. And in math, again, we look at exceeding the state in grade five, and grade six, and grade seven, and then grade eight is beneath the state. So we know where our energies need to focus in regard to the students and to be able to move forward. I want now to the Keystone exams. The Keystone exams, they were not changed. Therefore, we have the data from 2013 through 2019 that can be compared. Again, 2021 cannot be compared due to participation rate, so I caution you in trying to apply that. When we look at the data, let's start with biology. We have been below the state since 2013, yet we are growing the students and closing the gap between the state and the district. We were about 10% of students less proficient than the state in 2013, and by 2019, we're near 1% less than the state. We have analyzed the data and made changes to the science offering at the high school to build more solid foundation in science prior to the time students will take the Here again, we look at the subgroups for biology to determine where we need to focus our energy and our instruction. Now we turn to the Algebra I Keystone. This slide has a lot of data on it. The Algebra One Keystone, you see Pennsboro, the high school, and the district compared to the state. You recognize that a high percentage of students out of the class take algebra in Pennsboro prior to the high school. We can see the upward growth of students, 90% or higher are proficient in algebra at Pennsboro. This means they are proficient in math prior to the algebra course at the high school that the remainder of that class will take. The district average, when we look at the blue on the district average, we can see that it hovers around the state average when we take into consideration the high school and Pennsboro students that have taken the Algebra One assessment. We look at the high school subgroups for clarity, to understand, are we meeting the needs of the subgroups that the state has identified? We also look at Pennsboro to make the determination if we are meeting the needs of the subgroups And lastly, I turn to the Literature Keystone. The Literature Keystone demonstrates above average scores for Oxford since the implementation year of the new curriculum, reaching near 77% of the students proficient, with continued performance annually significantly above the state average. We also look at the subgroups to make the determination, are we growing all of our students at equal pace? And I also turn your attention to the Stanford.org national study on all school districts that note that Oxford area, school districts, is moving its students faster than the average. We will be continuing to program for students to close the achievement gaps that were related to the pandemic, as well as to grow the proficiency levels of all students in the district. We will be looking to, again, this year, offer an extended learning opportunity into the summer months and after the school programs to help close this gap. Additionally, we'll continue to acknowledge the mental health needs of our students and provide support for all students. I thank you for your kind attention to this data. If you have additional questions, I'm happy to address them, and I also direct you to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for any data on our district, as well as the other 499 districts in the public school system of Pennsylvania. Well, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Billings Jones? I have.
I have.
Go ahead.
So I agree with some progression that you've noted from 2015 onward, but just with all the cohorts and age rates here, there's significant erosion in 2021. Would you agree to that?
In some areas, in some grades, and I think in some, we don't have it. What's interesting is we saw some growth, increased growth in some of our subgroups, and that indicates to me that the remote learning would be one-to-one with our special population's students benefited from that delivery, so we investigate that further.
Yeah, I was actually kind of thinking the opposite here, but as I just kind of skimmed through, it seems like either some of these groups have plateaued, or a lot of them, there has been some erosion based off of the trajectory that improvements they can mention from 2015, which, again, one again, says I don't know that it's big alarms have to go off, but I would be interested if you just kind of mentioned very generally some things. You had talked about absence staffing, you had talked about mental health and things like that. You know, this is just, I can't believe this, on these charts here without de into some of the cohorts, but I feel like there's definitely, where there's smoke, there's fire, and there's some things here with the last PSSA on how to perform against the state requirements. So I'd just be interested, I don't know if there's some type of comprehensive plan that you're working on or something, just to address all the things that you pointed out, but I'd love to kind of hear as a follow-up, what you're doing more specifically to address some of these declines in the state.
Absolutely. In regard to any of this data, as I mentioned, every building administrator, we sit together, we have, we already sat, we do this data. We look at what are the solutions to where we see those areas. We are looking at additional math coaching. We brought math coaching in because math is an area we'd like to continue to bring the levels up, obviously, we see from fourth grade on that in fourth grade, they're still underperforming where we'd like to see them, of course. We'd like to see everybody at least 80% help. But to move those students forward, we brought in math coaching and providing professional development in that particular area to be able to help move the students forward in math. In ESL, we're looking at bringing in additional ESL teachers to be able to move our English learners, to provide us the support they need. With mental health, we brought in two clinicians from Deveraux to be able to address that mental health needs beyond our guidance counselors, so that every building has two days of clinically trained mental health professionals available for students. And it goes on and on. In regard to ELA, our ELA in our high school, they are, they are working to get those numbers back to those high 70 percentiles, and we will be, again, convening. And I wanted to broaden that question on Mr. Plaza, because I'm thinking, we have curriculum committees in the district that are K to 12 curriculum committees. So what we do is, it's a four-year cycle. The first year, we look at, we evaluate, we implement, we design, and we do analysis. So the four years, and every curriculum content is embedded in that cycle, so they're active each year in one to the area of that cycle. That K to 12 curriculum committee is a live committee of educators from the classroom, one per grade, that meet together to go over the consistency of education in the district. So we will be looking at our data, we will be looking at analysis of the curriculum, and we will be looking at what else needs to be implemented. As we look, as I mentioned, science is coming forward, as we look to design the science curriculum, again, to align. That's a process we have in place. It's really, all the students are first. We look at the progress, and we do it in a very unified approach. So we do honor our commitment to kids' first progress in every step that we take in regard to the student achievement.
Yes, I think that I'd love to learn more about those committees and why I wanted to start an education committee, so that those committees are changing and adding value that we're kind of coming to the board and we have a new committee first, kind of just dropping in and add-on, I think that would be beneficial. And then, I guess, the second thing I guess, just with mental health being such a big issue here, I'd love in a future meeting if you could kind of present, again, more of what is a comprehensive plan beyond just two experts speaking in the building. Is there, is there continued education for, for the teachers? Is there something that we're working to identify these students? I mean, you've heard about some of the tragedies recently in some of the surrounding school districts, so, again, don't need that answer tonight, but would love to just hear some of those things. I think we're, you know, we get caught up on a lot of great stuff lately, and I'd really love to hear, you know, what you guys are doing for the students, so.
And I appreciate that. And Mr. Plaza, a very short answer to that tonight is that we do have student assistance programs, and we have them in all the elementary buildings, we make sure that they're implemented there. We also have a system that alerts the administration if students are expressing in technology, any suicide ideation, depression, violence, and we also have the safety setting, which all the administrators will receive unalert if a student is in a crisis, and then, of course, the police are involved with us. So mental health is a priority in the district, always has been a priority, but we do fully understand the additional mental health concerns that are raised based on the pandemic. So I thank you for that and acknowledging that as well.
Mine's going to be easier. I just wanted to know, in your, like, if you go back and graph, like, there are graphs that are just the green and the blue numbers, that's the entire student body for that scoring, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Plaza.
And then the ones that have the subgroups broken out are just the subgroups.
That's correct.
So just maybe in the future, we could include a fifth category here that's not a subgroup, like, just, yeah, the total population? yeah, the total population?
And I certainly can do that.
I'm just wondering.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
This one? We have no questions. Financial reports, Mr. Tanga?
Being resolved at the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approving financial reports, the general fund treasury report, revenue report, expenditure report, cafeteria fund treasury report, and the capital projects fund treasury report.
Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports? Second? Any discussion? All favor say aye. Opposed? Student activity and athletic officials accounts, Mr. Tanga?
Being resolved, the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the student activities and athletic officials accounts for Pensgro School, the Oxford Area High School, and the athletic officials account.
Do I have a motion to approve the student activity and athletic officials accounts? Second? All favor say aye. I'm sorry, any discussion? All favor say aye. Opposed? Payment of bills, Mr. Tanga?
Being resolved, the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves payment of the following bills: the general fund, $2,827,556; the cafeteria fund, $73,918; apparel distribution of $1,792,809.
Do I have a motion to approve payment of bills? Second? Any discussion? All favor say aye. Opposed? Reports. Report of intermediate unit and technical college high school representative, Mr. Robinson?
Okay, thank you. The CCIU board has not met this month yet. In fact, as you can see from the first paragraph from my written report, the CCIU board will meet tomorrow night at Danningham. You will have to come back next month to hear the results of that meeting. However, I will report on some things that I had not covered from January's meeting. First thing, in the paragraph that you have in your written report, Dr. Varey expressed appreciation since it was National Board Appreciation Month. He appreciated, he expressed appreciation for our service through the IU, and we all received a travel mug with something like this. And it was actually filled up with little candies. The candies are torn now, but it's still a nice travel mug. And then, the students, by the way, and when we meet at the IU, almost the students from that particular school will do some bakery goods from the culinary arts program, and they presented little cupcakes that we took home and enjoyed. Second paragraph, the biggest thing involved from last month was Joe Lubisky, who is the Director of Administrative Services, who gave an update on the presentation on the CCIU budgets. And that will affect us because as soon as they are passed by the board, that'll be tomorrow night, we will pass those budgets that we've looked at for a month and a half or two months. We will pass those tomorrow night. And then, later in March, they will begin to give presentations in the school districts. There's twelve school districts that they will have to give presentations to. And I think in April, that Joe Lubisky will be here in Oxford making a presentation on the budget and asking us to approve it for the company here. And just about my report tonight, it's very short. And I think that when the board members saw that it was actually that short as it is, they gave a little sigh of relief, because I'm noted for talking too much anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Do I have a motion to accept the report of intermediate and technical college high school representative? Second? Any discussion? All favor say aye. Opposed? Report of Chester County School Board's Legislative Council Representative, Mr. Claus?
Yeah, we also met at the IU the day before Howard was there, but they didn't give us any cups, no candy, no cookies, so I guess I'll have to mention that in the next meeting. But not too much going on, because, let's say, it's pretty busy with the whole district community. And one thing I wanted to mention, that in the governor's budget, there's one thing there that's pretty impactful for us, and that's charter school reform, which comes up every budget, but doesn't seem to pass. But the one thing on there that would be, create a statewide cyber charter tuition rate. So if you have flat rate, would be very helpful for us. Supply rate would be ninety-eight hundred dollars. I believe right now, Mr. Tanga, if I'm wrong, I believe this is a student to a charter school, I think it's twelve thousand dollars that we pay, right? And if they have some sort of IEP or something like that, it's possible it will pay up to thirty thousand dollars a student. So if you think that we lose two students, we, you know, we're losing the starting salary of the teacher for two students moving. So that's going to be very helpful for us. There's also, as I spoke, you know, losing that thirty thousand dollars for that student. They're looking at doing a more fuller formula in terms of special aid funding for working more toward our schools, so we will see where that goes. And then, the other, other quick things, there's a foster child graduation, it's a Senate bill, and that needs to keep students on track to graduate high school who may be experiencing homelessness or foster care. And that just requires the school to have a designated point person for that student, just to make sure that they're getting the care that they need. That has been morphed into Act One, 2022. There's also a House bill that changes the district name, and there's some more things around that. That was passed by both the House and Senate, and went to the governor's table for signature on February ninth. I thought it was soon, it was signed with the bipartisan support, which does not really impact us. And then, there's some training mandates that were unanimously adopted bipartisan, which directs the Children's State Government Commission to establish an advisory committee to settle all the training mandates for public school educators and federal and state law regulations, prepare an assessment of all training mandates in state law or regulations, and identifying duplicate fed and state training mandates. So it just seems like it's, a lot of this is cleanup, if I had to be overly simplistic with it. But those are the three things, activity within a conflict. That concludes my report. Unless anyone has any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Claus? Thank you, Mr. Claus. Report of liaison with Oxford Parent Teacher Organization. I apologize, I was told that there was a student representative here. Please just state your name and tell us where, or what counselor you're from.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wilson, and I live in Oxford, Texas. And I'm Bura, 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 sorry, I don't know. I'm a student representative of the PTO, and I'd like to share what they've been doing over the past few months and what's coming up to look forward to. So in December, they had the Secret Santa workshop and the Selaxic Book Fair. Both were well-attended and successful. And in addition, as a holiday treat, in thanksgiving to the teachers and staff all across the district, the PTO fully stuffed the teachers' lounges with various drinks, soups, snacks, and candy. In January, the PTO ran a monthly most fundraiser and donated the proceeds to the scholarship fund that was started in memory of Mr. William Ray. In the beginning of February, the PTO honored the guidance counselors and the guidance secretaries across the school district for National Counselors Week. The PTO distributed cards and gave each counselor or secretary a gift card to a local restaurant. And today, the PTO delivered soft pretzels in Tibetan, that month I, but. The PTO delivered soft pretzels to the bus lot for National Bus Driver Day. The pretzels were a small token of appreciation to the patients with dedication of our district's bus drivers. Tonight, they ran their monthly most Taco Tuesday fundraiser, and currently, the PTO is running their Gertry Candy fundraiser. The fundraiser runs until March fourth, and if anyone's interested in ordering Gertry Talk, the link and the information can be found on their Facebook page, or you can email the PTO at pto@oxfordasc.org. Lastly, the PTO is currently taking orders for the discounted Hershey Park tickets. All orders for tickets need to be submitted power to or on March twenty-first. Over the last few months, the PTO has sponsored several gatherings. A few I would like to mention are the PTO providing dinner to the teachers and staff over conferences at all of the schools, and they pay for buses for trips for the carpooling at Hopewell, the Environment Club for the fifth and sixth grade. The PTO also helped the school store at Nottingham by purchasing prizes and rewards, and the PTO helped pay for their guest speaker who spoke at both Pensgro and High School. A guest speaker who spoke at Pensgro and High Schools. The upcoming information pertaining, our upcoming information, is the mother and son and the father-daughter dance, and they will be coming up very soon, the dates come out. And the father-daughter dance this year will only be K through eight. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I've been informed that I forgot to get a motion second and approval of the report of Chester County School Board Legislative Council Representative, Madam O'Callaghan. Second? Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report of Athletics and Student Activities Committee, Mr. Patterson, and go right into the report of Facilities Committee.
We did meet, in the meeting, we decided that moving forward, we're going to make sure that we communicate any sporting activities to the community, and hopefully that will help bolster some of our attendance, as well as reach out to the schools and have them communicate to us any student activities that they have going on in the school. And hopefully, we're not going to be redundant with the student representative information that they shared again, and so we'll evaluate that as we move forward to make sure that we're not doing that. As far as the facilities, we also met. We discussed the closing of a bathroom in the high school to understand why that's happening. It was a water heater, boiler issue, and getting the proper temperature to that bathroom. That is still in the works and being evaluated. There was also a gentleman that spoke at the last meeting in reference to why water fountains weren't working. And the reason that they're shut off is because it's part of the COVID protocol. So it's not that they're not working, they're shut off due to the COVID protocol that we have to solve. And then, the last part was just keeping our gym facilities clean and staying on top of the folks that we rent them out to, excuse me, to make sure that when they're done, that the facilities are clean for the next user. And we do have water filling stations throughout the building.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Report of the Players and Budget Committee, Mr. Tanga?
We did not meet last month.
Thank you, Mr. Tanga. Report of Policy Committee, Ms. Harrison?
We did meet, and we discussed the changes to policy seventy-three twenty that is on the agenda for this evening. We meet again on eighth of March at six thirty.
Ms. Harrison, as I understand it, that changes on that are just a second reading, correct?
Correct.
Report of Board in Service and Board Goals, Mr. Tyres, who can do the report here. Student Representatives Report, Ms. Wilburn, Wilburn?
Okay, so for Jordan Bank for this month, during the week of February twenty-eighth, Jordan Bank will celebrate Read Across America Week, and Jordan Bank will welcome honor students arranged by kindergarten teacher Margaret Wilkinson to read a book and do a related activity with each class. Jordan Bank will virtually host author Julia Cook, and this event is being funded by the Oxford Education Association Professional Grant written by Kristin Schatz. On March ninth, teachers will participate in another professional learning session. A math coach will work with teachers to design lessons on the incorporation of a math discourse into the classroom. For Elkridge, Elkridge would like to congratulate their student of the month. Elkridge celebrated their Winter Olympics. Each classroom was assigned a country and tracked the number of medals a country earned on the school's medal count board while also learning about the country in class. The Environment Team has been studying the state's natural resources and gearing up for the spring competition. Elkridge will also be celebrating Read Across America Week by welcoming in honor students from the high school. For Nottingham, Nottingham would also like to congratulate the student of the month for January. Grade four students in Mrs. Famaletti's class earned the Philadelphia Phillies Baseball Fanatic About Reading Award, and the Philly Fanatic came out to visit the students with a celebration reading assembly. Grade four band students are participating in a jazz clinic. During the week of February fourteenth through the eighteenth, Nottingham students celebrated Random Acts of Kindness Week, and each day was assigned a kindness theme in which students participated in by dressing up for the theme of the day. After a year hiatus, the Nottingham Intermural Program has returned, and Nottingham is also gearing up for Read Across America Week. For Hopewell, the Dads and Donuts and Moms and Muffins will be rescheduled to a later date, and on March twenty-first, Hopewell will have their Spring Picture Day. For Pensgro, Pensgro would like to congratulate Dayton Stiltsman for winning Pensgro Annual Spelling Bee, and he will be representing them in the Chester County Bee. On Friday, January twenty-eighth, students were celebrated in a pride assembly for having Pensgro Pride, Worthy Behavior, and Good Grades. The last round of virtual or in-person conferences will be on Wednesday, March ninth, and any students interested in spring sports should be sure to get physical information submitted online as sports begin March fourteenth. And for the high school, the scheduling process for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is beginning. An assembly explaining the scheduling process for current youth readers will be held at Pensgro on the twenty-second of February. And there's also a scheduling information meeting on the twenty-second at six-thirty in the high school for parents of current eighth and eleventh grade students. And then, from February twenty-third to March second, students will be able to make course requests into Power School. To date, the counseling department has received over one hundred and seventy acceptance letters to post-high school institutions and military service. Students attended an assembly on February seven sponsored by PTO and Student Council titled Safer Choices, featuring Mike Damas, speaker, author and founder of the Center for Respect. Currently, there are over eighty eleventh and twelfth graders signed up to take the SAT exam. For sports, Oxford wrestlers will be competing this Saturday at the PI double-I district tournament, which is hosted by Oxford. Alex Garrett-Hallis and Ryan Topniller have qualified for districts in swimming alongside Noah Topniller and A.J. Pinkley, who qualified for districts in two relays and will compete this Friday and Saturday at New York YMCA. Spring sports are beginning March seventh, so a reminder to turn in section seven and nine on the form release. And in celebration of Black History Month, the Diversity Club hung up informational posters through the history hallway reflecting on the important events and figures of Black history. The Diversity Club also hosted a successful nineties scene dance where students were able to dress up and dance the night away to the best of nineties music. Additionally, I would like to thank the Diversity Club and all they do to celebrate the cultural differences that make the students at Oxford so special. Education has always been focused on preparing students for the future, so promoting awareness and allowing all students to create a personal connection with diverse cultures can prevent students from developing prejudices later in life. Furthermore, our research study done at Drexel University concluded that when working and learning with people from a variety of backgrounds and cultures in the classroom, students actually gained a more comprehensive understanding of the subject matter. While I cannot speak on the adversity that students within the minority groups of our district have had, I believe that as a student representative, I must be a voice of support for them. As a senior at Oxford who has spent thirteen years of my life in this district, I am more than proud to say that I have been able to learn in an environment that promotes the celebration of diversity. of diversity. I hope that as our district moves forward, we all make an intentional commitment to understanding and supporting all cultures, backgrounds, and differences that make our school district so unique. That concludes my report.
Some of the seniors, senior seniors receive military acceptance. Do you have a number for us?
I don't, but I can get it.
Just interesting. I find it also very interesting that you guys are considering 90's music, something of... Again, thank you, Ms. Wilburn. Report School Program, Mr. Woods.
Thank you so much. After places, you will see a compilation of the survey determining community input for the use of the ARP S3 funding survey will set the community within about two weeks to complete the survey, but also pay for tablets for people who did not have access to technology. Just going to go quickly through the questions. High level purchase of personal protective equipment, sanitation of education buildings. We had 62% strongly agree or agreed for the use of those funds. Second question, the continuation of purchase of items associated with mental health services for students, and the continuation of addition of positive behavior management. We had 87% strongly agree or agreed in that column. Question three, continuation of purchase of technology, hardware and software, as well as general costs to update systems along with the opportunities for to present to parents on the use and understanding of hardware and software that students bring to the home. We had 82% strongly agree or agreed in that area. Updates and renovations to the physical plant or plants to ensure a safe and clean environment allowing for the continuation of education. We had 80% strongly agree or agreed in that column. Question five, continuing to improve the special services to our most needy populations in all areas of education and opportunities for... ...all of our schools. We had 78% strongly agree or agreed to that question. Next was, the district will plan to increase staffing and resources for the classrooms in areas of need to benefit the students' ability to learn and process educational materials. We had 91% strongly agree or agreed in that area. The district will maintain and add additional professional development resources to benefit student achievement. We have 76% agree or strongly agree in that area. And finally, the district will continue to add to the multi-tiered support system, the PSS, for students K to A and assess their advancement within the academic year, benefit students involved within the PSS program. We have 69% strongly agree or agree in those areas. So those areas encapsulate the areas that we had applied for in the American Recovery Plan S3 funding, to the tune of about $6.4 million, and dollar amounts will be assigned then in those areas they actually already are assigned in the grant proposal over the next two years into June of 2024. And that completes my report. Unless there's any questions on the survey.
Any questions, Mr. Woods? I'd like to make a quick motion to move item D, that would be 5D, to be discussed before 5A, as I suspect 5A may take a few minutes. So I'd like to give the opportunity to put 5B in front of 5A. Can I have a motion to accept that change?
Second?
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now a motion to move item D to above item A. Second?
Second.
All favor say aye. Opposed? Item D, Eagle Scout Project proposal. Be resolved if the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the proposed Eagle Scout project for cross-country environment restoration as per attached. Do I have a motion? Second? Like to make a discussion on this?
First off, I wanted to ask if I could pass out a copy of my proposal. Hello, my name is Alex Wade. I'm a junior at Oxford Area High School, working on becoming an Eagle Scout and through the team. To become Eagle Scout, one must plan and complete a project in one's community that displays the leadership. This project must be approved by the organization benefiting from the effort. The main reason that scouts must complete this project is to develop leadership skills, time management skills, and take responsibility for the significant accomplishment. My specific project is going to be constructing four benches for the Oxford High School Cross Country Team and removing seven fallen trees off of the high school property. The trees fell over when the tomato came through back in late August, and now blocking the cross-country team's 5K course. After removing the fallen trees, I will plant new trees in the place. Additionally, the new benches I am building will be replacing the three old ones that are currently falling apart. These new benches will be eight feet long and partially made of composite wood. With the removal of the fallen trees and the addition of sustainable benches, my team will have comfortable seating and be able to run our course once again. This project will be benefiting both the cross-country team and the high school as a whole. I have received an estimate of roughly $600 for the total cost of the project. I have to meet with the Oxford Jewelry Club to ask for a donation, and will need to raise the additional funds on my own. I wanted to thank the board for taking my project into consideration, and I plan to begin it in spring. I also would like to acknowledge and appreciate my project coach, Mr. Schaefer, my engineering teacher, Mr. Haney, and my cross-country coach, Mr. Walling, who have helped me with my preparation. They don't have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Wade? Just want to thank you for doing this. It's awesome. And can we help Alex if needed with the facilities team with these trees? If you need any help, is that possible?
Yes, we can also help financially if there he does his piece with the part that he has to do, whatever that difference is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wade, thank you so much for that. And just please do me a favor, shoot an email to the board to see if he wants to contribute to the project.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
New business, Mr. Queen?
Mr. Tanga, a motion by Mr. Tanga, second about Mr. Block, Eagle Scout project. And... Thank you, vote on Eagle Scout project?
No, sorry.
A motion by Mr. Tanga, second about Mr. Block.
Any further discussion on the Eagle Scout project? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business, I can ask if we can take a five-minute recess real quick before we start new business, because we've got a few names here that everyone's going to want to speak. So we're going to adjourn just for a brief five minutes.
I'm going to plug my phone in for a little bit. Let's wait some time. Plug my phone in. I have a backup one, but it's... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. We're just taking a, I don't know if you guys heard that, we're taking a brief five-minute break, so just hang tight. Let's see everybody here. Hi, Tik Tok. Sorry.
Oh yeah, but I don't know how much. I don't know. I haven't tried. I haven't tried.
I know everyone wants to do it. I'm Debbie.
Alright, just, um, just want to remind everyone, please, when you approach the podium, you've got five minutes to speak and just state your name and what town you prefer to get from. Alright, just, um, just want to remind everyone, please, when you approach the podium, you've got five minutes to speak and just state your name and what town you prefer to get from. We'll start with Ms. Dee Wiker. We'll start with Ms. Dee Wiker.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, one thing I wanted to add. Um, one thing I wanted to add. Okay, I wasn't sure about that until I asked. Okay, I wasn't sure about that until I asked. Okay, I wasn't sure about that until I asked.
It's always for committee meetings, and, well, not always, but mostly for committee meetings. Never for either the regular meeting session. It's always for committee meetings, and, well, not always, but mostly for committee meetings. Never for either the regular meeting session. It's always for committee meetings, and, well, not always, but mostly for committee meetings. Never for either the regular meeting session.
Okay, okay. Um, something I observed that I did not know if you were aware of or not, um, on the website, Okay, okay. Um, something I observed that I did not know if you were aware of or not, um, on the website, Okay, okay. Um, something I observed that I did not know if you were aware of or not, um, on the website, the, um, the treasures report, the, um, the treasures report, the, um, the treasures report, August, September, and October all have a treasures report that is dated for November and December. August, September, and October all have a treasures report that is dated for November and December. August, September, and October all have a treasures report that is dated for November and December. November 30th, 2021, and December 31st, 2021. November 30th, 2021, and December 31st, 2021. November 30th, 2021, and December 31st, 2021. Okay, um, yeah, all, all from August, September, October, November, and December, all are the same exact report. Okay, um, yeah, all, all from August, September, October, November, and December, all are the same exact report. Okay, um, yeah, all, all from August, September, October, November, and December, all are the same exact report. Okay, just so that you know that. Okay, just so that you know that. Okay, just so that you know that. Another thing I want to talk about is, um, Another thing I wanted to talk about is, um, Another thing I wanted to talk about is, um, we were talking earlier, somebody was speaking about, um, money, we were talking earlier, somebody was speaking about, um, money, we were talking earlier, somebody was speaking about, um, money, and we have performance, performance assessments that I was looking through, um, for superintendent and the assistant superintendent. and we have performance, performance assessments that I was looking through, um, for superintendent and the assistant superintendent. and we have performance, performance assessments that I was looking through, um, for superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And, um, I thought it was very strange that the three performance assessments that were up for superintendent And, um, I thought it was very strange that the three performance assessments that were up for superintendent And, um, I thought it was very strange that the three performance assessments that were up for superintendent were all exactly identical, but dated different years. were all exactly identical, but dated different years. were all exactly identical, but dated different years. Not a word was different. Not a word was different. Not a word was different. Not one word. But they all had different dates. I have a copy of it. Not one word. But they all had different dates. I have a copy of it. Not one word. But they all had different dates. I have a copy of it. Um, and the assistant superintendent, hers is exactly the same as Mr. Woods. Um, and the assistant superintendent, hers is exactly the same as Mr. Woods. Um, and the assistant superintendent, hers is exactly the same as Mr. Woods. Exactly. 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 No difference whatsoever. No difference whatsoever. No difference whatsoever. Now, I was on the website for the schools and, uh, Now, I was on the website for the schools and, uh, Now, I was on the website for the schools and, uh, the US Department of State, and their performance assessment, their evaluation for the, for the school superintendent was forty-four pages long. the US Department of State, and their performance assessment, their evaluation for the, for the school superintendent was forty-four pages long. the US Department of State, and their performance assessment, their evaluation for the, for the school superintendent was forty-four pages long. This evaluation is three, four pages long? This evaluation is three, four pages long? This evaluation is three, four pages long? That's a huge difference. Huge difference. That's a huge difference. Huge difference. That's a huge difference. Huge difference. So, I, I'm not understanding that at all. So, I, I'm not understanding that at all. So, I, I'm not understanding that at all. Don't understand why it's the same assessment three times in a row, no difference in wording, Don't understand why it's the same assessment three times in a row, no difference in wording, Don't understand why it's the same assessment three times in a row, no difference in wording, and why, um, and why, um, and why, um, the assistant superintendent would be the same thing. the assistant superintendent would be the same thing. the assistant superintendent would be the same thing. And I don't understand why this is, it, it just seems like it's, I don't know. And I don't understand why this is, it, it just seems like it's, I don't know. And I don't understand why this is, it, it just seems like it's, I don't know. I don't think that's a mistake. I don't see it as a mistake. I don't think that's a mistake. I don't see it as a mistake. I don't think that's a mistake. I don't see it as a mistake. Um, so, the performance assessments, um, Um, so, the performance assessments, um, Um, so, the performance assessments, um, I went on greatschools.org and I saw that our school quality is seventy-five percent below average, I went on greatschools.org and I saw that our school quality is seventy-five percent below average, I went on greatschools.org and I saw that our school quality is seventy-five percent below average, and our student progress is sixty-seven percent below average. and our student progress is sixty-seven percent below average. and our student progress is sixty-seven percent below average. Um, district revenue was sixty-five million dollars, but state average is forty-seven million dollars. Um, district revenue was sixty-five million dollars, but state average is forty-seven million dollars. Um, district revenue was sixty-five million dollars, but state average is forty-seven million dollars. Okay, so that's a difference of eighteen million dollars. Okay, so that's a difference of eighteen million dollars. Okay, so that's a difference of eighteen million dollars. So, people are talking about how much we need money, So, people are talking about how much we need money, So, people are talking about how much we need money, but we're talking about having eighteen more million dollars than average. but we're talking about having eighteen more million dollars than average. but we're talking about having eighteen more million dollars than average. Now, when you look at Now, when you look at Now, when you look at the state average per student, it's seventeen million dollars, the state average per student, it's seventeen million dollars, the state average per student, it's seventeen million dollars, and the state average per s- or the, the, the and the state average per s- or the, the, the average per student for our district is sixteen million dollars. and the state average per s- or the, the, the average per student for our district is sixteen million dollars. the average per student for our district is sixteen million dollars. So, that's seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars less per student. So, that's seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars less per student. So, that's seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars less per student. Now, if you look at Now, if you look at Now, if you look at one last thing I'd, I'd like to say is that our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, is that one last thing I'd, I'd like to say is that our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, is that one last thing I'd, I'd like to say is that our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, is that our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and Mr. Cooney are all getting raises of average of nine percent. our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and Mr. Cooney are all getting raises of average of nine percent. our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and Mr. Cooney are all getting raises of average of nine percent. Nine percent. Nine percent. Nine percent. Nine percent raise is ridiculous. Nine percent raise is ridiculous. Nine percent raise is ridiculous. And so, do you ever need to start paying attention to how much money is being spent and where is it being spent? And so, do you ever need to start paying attention to how much money is being spent and where is it being spent? And so, do you ever need to start paying attention to how much money is being spent and where is it being spent?
Ms. Nikki Boulger? Ms. Nikki Boulger? Ms. Nikki Boulger?
Hello, my name is Nikki Boulger. I'm a resident of Lower Oxford Township and a parent of a current kindergarten student. Hello, my name is Nikki Boulger. I'm a resident of Lower Oxford Township and a parent of a current kindergarten student. Hello, my name is Nikki Boulger. I'm a resident of Lower Oxford Township and a parent of a current kindergarten student. Before I move on to addressing Jennifer Key's comments during recent board meetings, Before I move on to addressing Jennifer Key's comments during recent board meetings, Before I move on to addressing Jennifer Key's comments during recent board meetings, I would like to point out that during the January eleventh work session, Michael Blessington was unaware that we have six schools, I would like to point out that during the January eleventh work session, Michael Blessington was unaware that we have six schools, I would like to point out that during the January eleventh work session, Michael Blessington was unaware that we have six schools, as he thought we had four. At a bare minimum, board members should know how many schools we have, especially if they're sitting on a curriculum writing as he thought we had four. At a bare minimum, board members should know how many schools we have, especially if they're sitting on a curriculum writing as he thought we had four. At a bare minimum, board members should know how many schools we have, especially if they're sitting on a curriculum writing or previous budgets and policies. Please do better if you're going to remain on this board. or previous budgets and policies. Please do better if you're going to remain on this board. or previous budgets and policies. Please do better if you're going to remain on this board. In regards to Jennifer Key's comments, I want to reiterate that we are not mad that she asks questions about a policy, about taxes, about test scores. In regards to Jennifer Key's comments, I want to reiterate that we are not mad that she asks questions about a policy, about taxes, about test scores. In regards to Jennifer Key's comments, I want to reiterate that we are not mad that she asks questions about a policy, about taxes, about test scores. We are upset that she's about a policy, about taxes, about test scores. We are upset that she's about a policy, about taxes, about test scores. We are upset that she's about a policy, about taxes, about test scores. We are upset that she constantly forward her to children as illegal. They're children. We are upset that she constantly forward her to children as illegal. They're children. We are upset that she constantly forward her to children as illegal. They're children. Why do we leave who labeled as anything other than children? Why do we leave who labeled as anything other than children? Why do we leave who labeled as anything other than children? Being in this country without documentation is not a criminal offense, Being in this country without documentation is not a criminal offense, Being in this country without documentation is not a criminal offense, and children are by no means at fault for how they arrived here. and children are by no means at fault for how they arrived here. and children are by no means at fault for how they arrived here. She was told multiple times that the school cannot legally ask immigration status. She was told multiple times that the school cannot legally ask immigration status. She was told multiple times that the school cannot legally ask immigration status. I would also like to point out that every home in this district pays taxes, I would also like to point out that every home in this district pays taxes, I would also like to point out that every home in this district pays taxes, whether the occupants own or rent, whether the occupants own or rent, whether there are zero or many living, men and children living in the home, whether the occupants own or rent, whether there are zero or many living, men and children living in the home, whether there are zero or many living, men and children living in the home, the owner of the home still pays taxes. the owner of the home still pays taxes. the owner of the home still pays taxes. When talking about test scores, she said, "Is it the curriculum, or is it that we have a population of students right now?" And then she was cut off. When talking about test scores, she said, "Is it the curriculum, or is it that we have a population of students right now?" And then she was cut off. When talking about test scores, she said, "Is it the curriculum, or is it that we have a population of students right now?" And then she was cut off. She also said, "If we are accepting those people." She also said, "If we are accepting those people." She also said, "If we are accepting those people." Those will very much drive down, again, additional numbers on our scores. Those will very much drive down, again, additional numbers on our scores. Those will very much drive down, again, additional numbers on our scores. The "if" in that statement tells me that she was considering not accepting them, which, legality aside, The "if" in that statement tells me that she was considering not accepting them, which, legality aside, The "if" in that statement tells me that she was considering not accepting them, which, legality aside, how can any human decide that they want to deny a child an education? how can any human decide that they want to deny a child an education? how can any human decide that they want to deny a child an education? She was putting test scores above living, breathing children in our district who need an education? She was putting test scores above living, breathing children in our district who need an education? She was putting test scores above living, breathing children in our district who need an education? All kids are more than test scores. As a taxpayer, I want every child, no matter how they arrived here, All kids are more than test scores. As a taxpayer, I want every child, no matter how they arrived here, All kids are more than test scores. As a taxpayer, I want every child, no matter how they arrived here, to receive the help and education that they need. to receive the help and education that they need. to receive the help and education that they need. If it means that my child receives a few less programs at school, so be it. If it means that my child receives a few less programs at school, so be it. If it means that my child receives a few less programs at school, so be it. My child is very privileged as am I, as are most of us, My child is very privileged as am I, as are most of us, My child is very privileged as am I, as are most of us, compared to the families that decided it was best to uproot their lives and risk everything to get their kids a better life in this country. compared to the families that decided it was best to uproot their lives and risk everything to get their kids a better life in this country. compared to the families that decided it was best to uproot their lives and risk everything to get their kids a better life in this country. Have some empathy. Have some empathy. Have some empathy. My young son was very proud that they are teaching his friend and classmate English, My young son was very proud that they are teaching his friend and classmate English, My young son was very proud that they are teaching his friend and classmate English, and it wrenched my heart to see his love and compassion towards his friend. and it warmed my heart to see his love and compassion towards his friend. and it warmed my heart to see his love and compassion towards his friend. No matter your views on immigration, it should be handled at the state and federal level, not Oxford area school district. No matter your views on immigration, it should be handled at the state and federal level, not Oxford area school district. No matter your views on immigration, it should be handled at the state and federal level, not Oxford area school district. Our district should focus on educating all students in our district. Our district should focus on educating all students in our district. Our district should focus on educating all students in our district. Jennifer Key also many times during the last two meetings mentioned that the community needed to know when homeless or undocumented children are accepted to our school. Jennifer Key also many times during the last two meetings mentioned that the community needed to know when homeless or undocumented children are accepted to our school. Jennifer Key also many times during the last two meetings mentioned that the community needed to know when homeless or undocumented children are accepted to our school. Why? Why does she need to know that? Why? Why does she need to know that? Why? Why does she need to know that? I urge our administration to not disclose any personal or identifiable student information to any member of the school board, I urge our administration to not disclose any personal or identifiable student information to any member of the school board, I urge our administration to not disclose any personal or identifiable student information to any member of the school board, especially if there's a risk that they will disclose that information to the public. especially if there's a risk that they will disclose that information to the public. especially if there's a risk that they will disclose that information to the public. There are far more serious issues that weren't being brought to the community's attention, and a child's immigration status is not one of them. There are far more serious issues that weren't being brought to the community's attention, and a child's immigration status is not one of them. There are far more serious issues that weren't being brought to the community's attention, and a child's immigration status is not one of them. As I end this, I will leave you with the words of Giselle Barretto-Fetterman, the second lady of Pennsylvania, addressing Jennifer Key's comments. As I end this, I will leave you with the words of Giselle Barretto-Fetterman, the second lady of Pennsylvania, addressing Jennifer Key's comments. As I end this, I will leave you with the words of Giselle Barretto-Fetterman, the second lady of Pennsylvania, addressing Jennifer Key's comments. Fetterman said, and I quote, "As someone who was one of those people and who grew up as an undocumented child, Fetterman said, and I quote, "As someone who was one of those people and who grew up as an undocumented child, Fetterman said, and I quote, "As someone who was one of those people and who grew up as an undocumented child, I can only imagine what my outcome would have been had school board members actively diverted against my success. I can only imagine what my outcome would have been had school board members actively diverted against my success. I can only imagine what my outcome would have been had school board members actively diverted against my success. Good people of Oxford, please run for school board." Good people of Oxford, please run for school board." Good people of Oxford, please run for school board." End quote. And with that, I once again ask Jennifer Key to resign. End quote. And with that, I once again ask Jennifer Key to resign. End quote. And with that, I once again ask Jennifer Key to resign.
I'm going to take this time right now, uh, just to correct incorrect comments. Normally, we stay silent, we listen, uh, but this has been an ongoing issue. First off, to compare our district with a website speaking to Mrs. Wiker's comments, uh, greatschool.org, we're not familiar with those websites. As I think you saw today, uh, we're deceiving that this meeting, assistant superintendent Billings Jones, laid out the good things that are happening in this school district according to our state standardized test scores. Additionally, I'd like to address the administration raises that was given an incorrect percentage far above what any of my colleagues, Mr. Cooney, or Dr. Billings Jones, or myself actually made. And third, the evaluation is a compilation. You could go back to the almost ten years that I was here. The compilation is from a detailed evaluation. The compilation is what is required by state code, and I believe those compilations have proficient throughout the, uh, compilation for the balance of the years. So, taking this time just to correct some incorrect statements, uh, because they've been current, and I believe that we need to add a voice to the correct statements. So, thank you for indulgence. Thank you, Ms. Boulger, for your comments. Ms. Ronnie Fluck?
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Lutz. I'm from Easton, Manhattan Township. And I'm here this evening in the presence of witnesses to serve Mr. Robert Tanga with a letter of intent to file a claim against his surety bond for violating thirteen federal and international codes. Firstly, we cite examples of board actions that are at the least of good judgment in its responsibilities to ensure the welfare of children and families at most are in legal opposition to their oaths of office and stated governing responsibilities and authorities. Most of the school board members voted December seventh to recommit for an additional six months to the required federal health and safety plan that is attached to the S R three funding. Funding which forfeits children and parents' constitutional rights and the right of parents to make decisions regarding their children's medical care and/or treatment. Superintendent Woods violated federal and state application requirements for S R three, by, S R three funding by not engaging stakeholders prior to submitting the application. School board members voted forward and moved forward and voted on health and safety plan without exercising their own due diligence on this family-impacting, critically-important plan placed before them for enactment. School board members did not demand and were indeed denied access by Superintendent Woods to the proposed health and safety plan prior to the meeting at which it was voted upon. School board members did not vote to table the vote on the health and safety plan so the new school board members could have an opportunity to inform themselves of the details of the plan. Director Klaus voted for the plan without having read it. Director Dean threatened stakeholders with pushbacks for speaking out in opposition. School board members should be held accountable for its approval of superintendent's annual review and subsequent salary increases, which over, uh, have been from one fifty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars at hiring to a current two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, with at the very least, test scores of students have plummeted forty percent. Secondly, we cite the example, the following examples of gross misconduct, incompetence, and/or neglect of duty on the part of Superintendent Woods relating to the health and safety plan and homeless policy seventy-three twenty revisions. Superintendent offered to fool stakeholders by suggesting there be two health and safety plans, one for submission to the federal government that would carry the authority to take action against the children and families, and one that would satisfy the stakeholders. This is a gross infection, infraction of his lawful duties. Superintendent Woods withheld the information that the twenty-one high school homeless students were placed by Homeland Security. The school board did not update the homeless policy seventy-three twenty as recommended in the homeless monitoring audit of April twenty-first, April twenty, twenty-one, and must do so now to comply with federal S R updated verbiage to make acceptance of these twenty-one high school homeless students allowable. Superintendent Woods requested that the board approve his being made the sole party responsible for the homeless students that attend Oxford area high school. Voters elect school board members from within our community for a reason, to offer balance, integrity, and perspective when approaching all matters relating to the education of our district's children. To do, to do as suggested, making Mr. Woods sole overseer of a particular block of students would prevent the school board members from performing their own required duties, holding them in conflict with their oaths of office and descriptions of responsibilities. That which would be even uttered to the board for suggestion, for consideration, speaks volumes to superintendent's overall intent and lack of character. This would allow for achievement standards appear greater than they truly are. Such an overreach supplants the school board's authority and goals of governing and combined with above-mentioned shortfalls is sufficient to demand his immediate removal. Mr. Tye's letter to the community contributed to and perpetrated vilification and created racist narrative.
Thank you, Ms. Lutz. Jim Shaw?
It's Shane.
Oh, it's Shane. Hi, I'm Andy. I'm from Easton Township. I have a little thing written here, and I have to come over there and review it, or whether I'm just going to take up your time, because I want you to know that this is never going to go away. Ms. Keys, you are a stain on our school and our community. Uh, and I know I'm supposed to address you. I look at you, but just so we're aware. Okay, okay. Well, unfortunately, I'll talk to you, but you guys are all going to have to suffer because of this. You see this crowd, we are not moving anywhere. So, everyone can get used to these long meetings and, and people being here only. I, I can't even imagine that it's up for question that the wife of a pedophile is on our school board. There, uh, it is factually.
But it is a personal attack and it may happen.
We're understanding, understood. Then we'll just go with, you are clearly a example. You, uh, have no business making any decisions.
Sir, yes.
Sir, yes. Please, address me, and please just stay away from any echoing--
I'm just going to, I'm just going to stand here for the next three and a half minutes. If anybody is willing to stand with me, who wants to see this, Keys resign, please do so now.
You're going to allow this? What about the rules?
We're just going to be here for the next three and a half minutes.
One more statement in the club, then--
I appreciate you standing with me. Make sure the community gets to see that.
One minute, Ms. Chan.
Thank you, sir. We can and will do this as long as you keep your seat. Back to all of you, I hope you had a good day, and you're safe.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. Lizzie Evans-Ralston?
Hi, um, hello, Mr. Tyne. Hi, hi. And Mr. Woods? My name is Lizzie Evans-Ralston, and I'm a resident of Oxford Borough West, as well as a junior at Oxford Area High School. I have lived and attended school in the Oxford Area School District for my entire life, and I am incredibly thankful for the opportunities that have provided me. I've been accepted into the A T P program. Um, I achieved high grades, and am achieving high grades, and challenging myself in various A T classes, and applying myself in new ways to the music department and various extracurricular activities. I have been able to succeed in girls' student, and I could not be more thankful for the opportunities I have, and the way in which my wonderful teachers have challenged me to further my education. It is because of this school district that I remain who I am today, which is why I feel so heartbroken to hear the comments made at the last school board meeting. The thought of another student being denied the same opportunities that I have simply because of something as trivial as perceived test scores is abhorrent and absolutely unjust. The students being accused all came to America to have opportunities, and all students deserve a right to an education. All children deserve to be given a chance to succeed. It is appalling that someone could look at any child and blame them for low test scores, all while suggesting that perhaps because of the hand that has been dealt, they don't deserve the same opportunities that I have been given, as someone who has opted out of almost every standardized test those scores are based on. So, I have earned a zero on every score of this test. They have all earned higher scores than I will ever have on any of those tests, besides the East Nottingham Township. It is one of my core beliefs that if the right to education is not given to one of us, it is not given to all of us. And as long as I'm concerned, those students are members of the Oxford Area School District, and they are my friends, my classmates, and my equals. No matter who they are, no matter where they came from, and no matter how they came here, they deserve exactly what I have been given, because they are students too, and I don't feel comfortable coming to a school whose board upholds these opinions, because this is a representative body that does not represent the core values of me or many of my classmates, the people who actually attend the schools that you reflect, make decisions on behalf of, and are supposed to ally with and support. In fact, all of us have learned of one way or another about Thomas Paine, the revolutionary author of Common Sense and a founding father of these United States, who also spurred the American Revolutionary War, in which, you may recall, we earned our independence in Britain almost two hundred years ago, well, over two hundred years ago. It was he who said, "Whatever is my right as a man is also the right of another, and because my duty to guarantee as well as to possess." Thank you for your time.
Is it Adam Evans-Ralston or Ralston?
I did Ralston.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Andrea Evans?
Good evening, Mr. Woods and Mr. Tyne. So, Lizzie's my daughter, and I don't know if I can talk to that, Lizzie, but just wanted to put in my two cents. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to speak. My name is Andrea Evans. I'm a resident of Oxford Borough West, and a parent of both an alumni and a current student of the school district. In fact, many people present tonight know my kids, because they have both taken advantage of the many opportunities offered to the school district. Indeed, there are people present in this very room tonight who have nurtured, challenged, and encouraged my children on their journey through an academic life paved with opportunity. As a mother, I am close to the end of this journey. Imagine as a mother, the fury of hearing elected representatives espouse a belief that not all students should be treated the same, that a targeted group of children would be treated in a manner excluding them from the opportunity that my children benefited from, opportunity that allowed my own children to flourish, as you've seen here tonight more than once. So, of course, mothers of those targeted children, I feel your fury, and that is why I'm here tonight. School board directors, among you are directors not invested in being the stewards of opportunity for all of the students in the Oxford Area School District. Their message is strongly worded with terms like "pretend to care about the students." Let that sink in. Pretend to care about the students. Think about that the next time you're poring over policy at night, that that is what's being said. Pretend to care about these students, my children, our children. If you, as directors, truly care about our students and want them on a journey, to journey on a path forged with opportunity, stand with us furious mothers and fathers as we ask for the resignation of the directors not committed to the success of each and every child in the school district. Thank you.
Mr. Jim Labor, Oliver Labor, Jim Labor? Ms. Lauren Rubina?
My name is Lauren Rubina, from Lower Oxford Township. I hate public speaking. I despise it. While I was trying to decide if this was something I should do, my second grader told me about a new student in his school. He said, "They don't speak English, and they're from another country." My son said, "Mommy, that must be so scary." Oddly enough, he never mentioned test scores. My eight-year-old is able to recognize the turmoil that these children are going through, so I figured a few minutes of my own discomfort was worth it. I'm here for those students. I am a nurse. It is my job to take care of my patients. It does not matter who they are, what they look like, where they come from, or what language they speak, their care is my responsibility. When I have a patient who does not speak English, I learn how to say hello and goodbye in their language. Why? Because I want them to feel welcome and safe during an uncertain time. While I do not speak their language, I want them to know that I accept them, and my care for them will not falter due to the language barrier. It is my job to take care of all my patients the same way. All of the children of the Oxford Area School District are like your patients. It is your job to keep them safe and make sure that they get the education they deserve while they are in your care. It is your job to take care of all the students the same way, regardless of your opinions on how they got here. Some of you have shown through your recent actions that you don't see all of the students as your responsibility. Jennifer Case's comments at the January eighteenth meeting and the recent policy committee meeting have proven that where children come from is more important to her than their education. There are many issues with this, but the worst part is that it proves that she has failed to do her job. I have learned a lot of things in my fifteen-year career as a nurse. I've learned to do full assessments, learned to take vital signs, I've also learned hello and goodbye in a few different languages. So, I ask you to follow my lead, Mrs. Case. Assess the situation in this room. Put your finger on the pulse of the community, and learn to say adios.
I'm sorry, it looks like Owen Aliyito, correct? How do I pronounce that?
Aliyodo.
Yes, Aliyodo is correct. Uh, I am Owen. I'm a high school senior at Oxford Area High School, and I'll try to keep this brief. As a student at Oxford Area High School, I remember one image very clearly. It was a black-and-white picture from the fifties of a white protester screaming in the face of a black child, holding a sign. I don't remember the exact words of it, but the message was clear, "You are not welcome here." That picture is still being published in books and put up in museums across America, and that's how those people will be remembered forever. Ms. Keys, this is how you will be remembered forever, by saying you are not welcome to the, to the Latino children of our community. And I'd like you to think about that.
Jill Gallagher?
Good evening. Um, my name is Jill Gallagher. I have two children enrolled in the school district. I live in East Nottingham Township, and, um, tonight I'm here to ask Jennifer Case to resign. It would seem like Jennifer is merely a soldier, and her husband's in person. They have started a group called the Oxford Area Patriots, where they meet at their church, and they discuss issues which I'm not sure, because they discuss them in private, not with all stakeholders, which is actually against the district's policy as far as the bylaws go. I have some photographs I have printed up off of Facebook, different comments regarding their group, and I have our district's policy, and I have a violation of five different policies in our bylaws from the comments that she have made at the January eighteenth meeting, that she said again at the February eighth meeting, and that her husband has posted online. I feel like she has surrendered her responsibility to the school board by posting online under her husband's name, which there is an example here, I will give this to you guys to look over. If she still refuses to resign, I am asking that the school board please review this and make sure that she is not in violation of any more bylaws. Before I close out my speech, I would like to address Mr. Blessington. I, um, I have not found anything--
You're not supposed to address anyone.
Okay, well, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I would just like to say that I haven't found anything as far as breaking rules go, but I have seen enough to make my stomach turn, and I would just beg you to be more sensitive and thoughtful in the future with your public image and the words that you use. Kids first, progress, and most importantly, unity is what we should be here for. Thank you.
My name's Amanda Jackson. I'm from West Nottingham Township. I've been a taxpayer, and I've voted in our district for almost thirty years. I voted for Jen Case in our last local election, and I wanted to stand up and show some support for her. Um, a few meetings ago, she did what she was elected to do, and that was to ask hard questions. Since then, I've watched some local Facebook groups with self-elected administrators allow a steady stream of online bullying of Jen and her family to take place, and not just Jen and her family, but actually anyone who attempted to speak up in her defense. My guess is that none of these people who are currently enraged and highly offended on social media and actually here today, uh, voted for Jen. These are probably people who opposed her from the beginning. The comments that she made a few meetings ago were taken out of context and misconstrued into something that they unfairly framed as racist. This group of Facebook administrators used their local moms and Oxford message board social media platforms to push their personal political agenda. They started a change.org petition that got thousands of signatures, and that sounds really impressive, except most of those signatures were from people who don't live in Oxford. After having several conversations with a handful of local people about the Jen Case incident, I would ask them, "Do you really think Jen was insinuating that poor students and immigrant students aren't smart?"
Yes! Yes! Yes!
No.
All right, sorry.
Everyone else, and we will not have that type out first, please.
Thank you. Um, I would also ask them if they felt like she really thought that Oxford should not provide an education for them, or that she is a flat-out racist. All of the responses were, "No, actually." So, everyone understood the point that she was attempting to make at that meeting, but their issue was that her word choice was bad when referring to-- when referring to the specific groups of children as those people. So this is the precedent we are allowing in our community, that regardless of intent, a poor choice of words will ignite a smear campaign on social media. It will spark investigations into your extended family members, and most importantly, it now justifies online harassment and bullying. Even just as a public supporter of Jen's, I have found myself being a target of online bullying. People were leaving comments on my Facebook page from Texas, from Kentucky, even from polling, okay, in response to Jen Case. I've had a man pull pictures of my family to make a viral TikTok video presenting me as a racist. So I can only imagine the nightmare that Jen and her family have been put through, and for what? For asking hard questions? For a poor use of words? As parents, we encourage our children to be strong and be bold and to take a stand against bullying when they see it. And that's why I came here to support Jen tonight. Our children are watching. Why do kids bully? It's because they see adult bullying. That's why. So as a board, you need to focus on the needs of our students and educators in the school system, not hyper-focus on a poor choice of words or the opinions of a few social media groups. You need to allow for hard, uncomfortable questions to be asked and realize that each of you are here and elected from people who live in your school district. Not people in Kennett, not people in Avon Grove, not people in Rising Sun, but Oxford voters. So please, stop the bullying, support one another, ignore the social media hype, and just focus on getting the work done. And I have to say, I am so disappointed that you would allow that nonsense, the habit, to actually occur. And to me, that was bullying on your part. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Jennifer Warren and Mr. Kevin Warren are on the list, but I do believe you wanted to speak just at the beginning of the agenda. Mr. Kevin Warren?
Thank you. I'm Kevin Warren. I'm in Health and Township. It's my understanding that some directors have changes they want to make to the Health and Safety Plan also that have been added with safety plans requiring for the Esters Grant. As an engineer, one of the ways we make sense of complex problems is to define the project, the boundaries that we're dealing with. What are the outcomes that we absolutely need? And what are the really requirements? And then what are the other benefits that we'd like to have? So say we're discussing, you know, we're building a new school, and nice to haves would be things like minimizing the construction cost or having better vocational facilities. These kinds of things are often in conflict at the balancing act, where we're, you know, getting feedback from stakeholders, people feel passionately about different sides of it, and you've got to evaluate those trade-offs. But unlike the nice to haves, any project has a list of strict requirements, the must-haves. Beyond just meeting the requirements of the law, those would include meeting the requirements of different funding sources. So for that new school, you know, we could be getting a grant as long as we comply with best practices, say around the American with Disabilities Act. You might have, of course, know your local QAnon Karen who read that the ADA was, you know, some kind of plot, but as long as it was cost-effective, any professional would need those grant requirements and pay the money. Now, where this applies is, you know, I think most of you, when you're looking at the Health and Safety Plan, are trying to find that balance between competing objectives, right? On the one side, we've got this objective of minimizing dangers to the vulnerable in our community. On the other side, there's the objective of minimizing inconvenience to students and to families that are created from safety measures like masks and quarantines. But you also need to keep in mind those strict requirements. And I think in this case, it's complying with the federal requirements, otherwise you could jeopardize that $6 million that Oxford cannot afford to lose. There's nothing really very complex about that, except I think we have some stakeholders where rejecting the grant is the goal. They want Oxford to make this huge financial sacrifice in order to further some imagined war against tyranny. No logical justification is provided for jeopardizing this money, only a string of slippery slope fallacies. Now, I'm confident that none of you believe that the CDC could decide to seize our children and keep them in prison for 10 days, or that George Soros is behind all of this recent concern in the community, or that children need to have supplies in case they're imprisoned for days, or that the county might use our parking lots to force children to be vaccinated. I think you all know that these arguments are not logical reasons to put $6 million in jeopardy. Maybe there is a logical argument for jeopardizing that money, but I have not heard it yet. And this is not a conservative versus liberal or a Democrat versus Republican issue. This is an issue of staying grounded in rational reality rather than indulging in paranoid delusions. I'm not implying that any of you buy into that sort of thinking, but I'm here because there's a danger in hearing something over and over. It can become normalized, and pretty soon, the unthinkable becomes thinkable. Please don't let it. In your debate about the plan, work to find a balance between the objective of safety and the objective of convenience. I think everyone in this room would find a different balance, but you'll be doing your job well as long as you focus on finding that balance while you stay within the federal requirements for the grant. Thank you.
Is that Jay Janelle Doers, Davis? Yes. I'm sorry.
It's okay. There's a reason I typed this. Good evening, Mr. Ty and members of the board. My name is Taneele Deweeds. I reside in Upper Oxford Township. I'm a mother of four students in this district, and though I don't regularly attend board meetings, I am otherwise fully immersed in their educational experience here in Oxford. I won't bore you with the list. It might take five minutes. I usually follow what's going on in this board, but I've mostly felt that I could trust that our board has the best interests of students at heart. When I've stepped in and written letters to the board on several occasions and attended a handful of meetings, mostly via Zoom, it has always been with a concern for equitable education for all students. To understand why that's so important to me, you may be interested to know that I have spent every spring and summer since 2010 running the Nottingham Presbyterian Church Back to School Fair. We have given between 300 and 900 to 1,000 students a year their grade-specific school supplies that are needed. On that day, we have also, the kids have also sometimes walked away with a new haircut, new-to-them clothes, and access to family resource agencies on the spot. I've met families who've just arrived to our community, and sometimes with the help of an interpreter, sometimes through their own children, sometimes struggling really hard to remember my Spanish three from high school. I have been proud to welcome them to their new hometown as neighbors with open arms. Really, as parents, all we needed were our eyes to communicate that all we really want is the best for our kids. This is the attitude most everyone I know has as well. I didn't need a law telling me that I couldn't ask questions to know that our neighbors deserve dignity, respect, and an education for their children that was free of prejudice. I thought this was the attitude of our board, and I honestly believe that it was until the last election. And now, I find it my duty to make sure that our board understands this is the expectation. We may not always be out in force for every meeting, but we are paying attention. We are involved parents, and we care about all the students of Oxford Area School District receiving a free education. In continuing my focus on equitable education for all, I'd like to ask you to seriously consider the impact any changes to our current Health and Safety Plan may have on our ability to receive much-needed Esters Grant free funding. I understand that we heard the results of the online survey from stakeholders about how that funding could be used. But I'm curious about what other means of surveying our parents, how our parents feel about Health and Safety have taken place. For instance, has a survey been taken of students who continue to voluntarily mask at school? I think it could pretty easily be done just with homegirls teachers. I had my three students do it. Well, I have four students, but getting my second grader to count kids in his class and remember it by the time he got home wasn't happening. My fifth grader had 70% of her class continuing to mask. My ninth grader, 87 out of 122 students in her classes were masking, that's 71%. My 10th grader had 53%, and if I pull them all together, it was about 62% for my students, my children, and the exposure that they're having at school with masks. Since an online survey is only as good as the engagement it receives, I hope that you'll consider doing your own formal study of how our students, and by extension, their families, feel about masking, health, and safety. From what my family has observed, it appears as though the majority of our students are still choosing to wear masks. So while the people not in favor of taking common-sense safety measures during a pandemic may loudly object and come out with stronger numbers to speak against it, I wonder if this simple survey would give you a better glimpse into the minds of our entire student body and their families. We are not a school district that's able to turn away additional funding, as has been highlighted in the current Pennsylvania Supreme Court Fair Education Funding Act, which identifies our school district above the top 100 underfunded school districts in the state. Now, I personally don't care about test scores, but for those that do, I'd say that our poor funding is a much greater factor in test scores than a few immigrant children deserving of an education. It is also immediately actionable, as we can receive this funding just by maintaining a Health and Safety Plan. Please don't let the loud view take this funding away from our schools. I see this money as a way to free up our budget so we can get some of those wish lists.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Melissa Goodt, please.
Good evening, Mr. Ty and board. I'm Elizabeth Deweeds. I reside in Upper Oxford. I'm currently a sophomore at the high school. I've been a student of the district since kindergarten. I've never heard anyone say anything like what Ms. Case said at the board meeting on January 18th. I can proudly say that my peers have all been accepting new students every year. Sometimes, teachers need to slow down to explain things to other students, but that's not always because of the language barrier. Often, I am the student holding up the class because I need extra help, instruction, or explanation. But I won the birthplace lottery being born in this town, so my need for extra help does not seem to concern you. None of my peers have ever shown frustration at my or any of the students' need for assistance. Since the unfound comment that Ms. Case made publicly at the board meeting and showcased on the social media, there has been a divide in our school. Students seem emboldened to make horrific comments about our Latinx students that they have never made before. Prior to the last few weeks, I've never heard any of these comments from a student, teacher, or board member in my eleven years of going to Oxford Area School District. Frankly, I'm appalled by the remarks Ms. Case made about some of those students attending our school district, including that accidental slip-up she made during the February 8th meeting repeating the same students again with a smirk on her face. I'm personally privileged to be attending the school with every one of my peers. I can't imagine being put in the position that Ms. Case has placed many families of a sister. All children deserve education, no matter what. In closing, I'd like to note that I'll be voting age in two years and want to thank two of our most, sorry, excuse me, two of our most newly-elected board members for teaching me the importance of participating in every election and getting to know each candidate before I head off to polls. Like Lizzie Evans-Rawston, I'm often out of standardized testing, so I have to proceed serious on all of those test scores. Thank you.
Charles Vicki?
Hello, Oxford. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. An Oxford Area School District board member has disparaged homeless children as illegals, blamed them for low district rankings, and sought to memorialize these types of derogatory terms in policies meant to protect them. These stereotype threats have detrimental effects on students' performance and well-being. Based on 35 years of raising a family here, the 73,000 people to date who have petitioned for the board member's resignation are the people who overwhelmingly reflect our communities. The U.S. Supreme Court in Plyer versus Doe disproved 40 years ago the myth that children who are not legally admitted into the United States negatively impact the quality of education for other students. Found that every child in the United States, regardless of legal status, is a protected person under the 14th Amendment, and found that the deprivation of education takes an estimable toll on the social, economic, intellectual, and psychological well-being of the individual and poses an obstacle to an individual's achievement. Again, the education system is central to a child's well-being. The McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, behind District Policy 7320, guarantees equal access to public education for homeless students. The district served 112 homeless students in the 2019-20 school year, up from 111 students the prior year, the highest numbers in the decade. The only focus of Policy 7320 on tonight's agenda should be to provide students with every opportunity to succeed. There should be no confusion about district rankings relative to race, ethnicity, disability, primary language, or socioeconomic status. As stated earlier, the Pennsylvania Department of Education publishes performance assessments within each of these subgroups for every district and school in the state. Our district, of just over 27,000 people, includes an established and growing Hispanic population. One in six district residents are Hispanic. One in three Oxford Borough residents are Hispanic. Our district, I'm sorry. Please remain focused on the mission of the Oxford Area School District, to have all students achieve academic excellence in a safe and nurturing environment. Reject and expose stereotypical misinformation presented in the guise of inclusiveness. Thank you.
Ms. Gloria Stefani Lopez?
Hello. Hi to everyone here tonight. My name is Gloria Stefani Lopez. Most people know me as Stefani. I'm a resident of East Nottingham Township, and I have a child in the district, and soon it will be two children. So recently, I came across a quote that in reality, I believe summarizes what we're discussing today at hand. And that quote was, "Anything blocking our community from education is an enemy to our progress." I'll say it again. "Anything blocking our community from education is an enemy to our progress." So Ms. Case and to anyone on the board for that matter that shares the same xenophobic views and decides to block any child from an education and thus the progress of our community is our enemy. I would like to remind you that the United States Supreme Court issued a decision in Plyer versus Doe in 1982 that declared states cannot deny students a free public education on the account of their immigration status. The ruling was based upon the 14th Amendment Equal Protection Clause. The court reasoned that resources saved by excluding undocumented children from schools were far outweighed by the harm to America's progress. That, Ms. Case, and to the board, is the law. Neither you, or I, or anyone in the audience for that matter is above the law. It is the United States way and what America stands for. You may not exclude an immigrant child, legal or, in your words, illegal, from entering our district. You and the board are prevented from releasing student education records, including information about their immigration status. And this is all under the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act. And since you'd like to do research, you could have done that research. Anyway, referring back to my initial quote, the definition of an enemy, Ms. Case and the board, is a person who is actively opposed or hostile to someone or something. And Ms. Case, or should I say, Mr. Case-- Take a step back and realize the damage that you have already done to our community.
Personnel, Mr. Woods.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend the attached list of professional personnel.
Do I have a motion to approve the attached list of professional personnel? Second, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Non-professional, Mr. Woods.
I recommend the attached list of non-professional personnel.
I have a motion to accept the attached list of non-professional personnel. Second, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Volunteer, Mr. Woods.
I recommend the attached list of volunteers.
I have a motion to approve the attached list of volunteers.
Ouch.
Second, any discussion?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Consent agenda, be resolved with the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the following consent agenda items. Section thirteen oh two, students, students named on the attached list to be considered resident of the school district for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, according to section thirteen oh two of the Public School Code. High School Course Selection Guide, approval of the Course Selection Guides for Oxford Area High School for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, ask for attached Oxford Area High School ten and twelve, Oxford Area High School incoming ninth grader. Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second, any discussion?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. We move to section D, so on to section E, Health and Safety Plan. Be resolved, the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the draft changes in the District Health and Safety Plan template for the ARPESR Fund, American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. Do I have a motion? Discuss it after the motion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
So I have a comment to make on the Health and Safety Plan. The revisions in this document, I believe, still are not adequate. The fact that this money has strings attached to it remains a problem. Are we prepared to have the government dictate to us what we do in our district? Is this really the best choice for our students? I know that in this plan, we are allowing the Chester County Health Department, or the state, if they decide to relinquish their rights to the state, if they decide to relinquish their rights to the state, to choose what is best for our children, our students, our district, rather than giving that right to the parents. I still feel strongly that we should not be accepting this money in exchange for our students' rights or freedoms. We, as board members, took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, and as far as I, as far as I know, the Constitution still stands for freedom. The freedom of our students should never be for sale, no matter how much is promised by the government.
I am in favor of the plan, but I would like to see some changes to the plan. Specifically, there's, there's three changes that I would like to propose and put forth. One is the, under section one, LEA governing body will, the current says authorize the chief school administrator to implement the approved plan, excuse me, to coincide with changes by the Chester County Department of Health as needed, and I had requested to strike out and have it read as the LEA governing body will implement the approved changes by the Chester County Department of Health as needed, and what that does is it keeps the board in charge of any changes that need to happen. My second proposal is under A, three A, which is universal and correct wearing of masks. Currently, we have two, three, four, almost five pages of things that we say we will do, and starting with masked face coverings must be worn by all non-students, school staff, visitors, and it goes on, and my proposal to change that is in line with one of the other districts in our county, which, the wording can be, again, tweaked either way, but it says where required by law, proper masking and face shield can be used, be discussed with, used and discussed with those wearing such on school property and on buses, and obviously, the question that I've received on the buses is, it is a mandate currently, even though that we have a mandate as a mandate within the school and have left it up to the parents, and my goal behind this is to do the same. I'd like to see the parents be able to control, unless there's a law mandating it for us, the parents to have that choice on whether or not they put a mask on their child, and the way that this is written currently, as long as it's recommended, we would then, then or could be locked in, as other districts within our county currently are. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, Oxford, up until today, was he the only one that had removed the mask mandate and gave the parents the choice back in December? And I believe that now there are other districts doing such, Avon Grove, Cannon, Unionville, on the twenty-eighth of February, so I'm not really sure what the mandate date there is, but again, I'm in favor of the parents making that choice. The other recommendation change that I have is under the, putting the vaccination clinic in the school, excuse me, and my recommendation there was to, the LEA will provide information regarding off-site clinics providing medical care, excuse me, for those that require any emergency use of O A S D facilities, in no way assumes any implied consent by any individual. And then there's another addition, yeah, to that, and I don't know if we can go tonight, but the other one is an Avon Grove piece that basically states that there'll be no mandate. Vaccinations for staff and students will not be required for attendance or employment. So I think that kind of covers that piece. And then the last one, was the physical distancing. It just kind of cleans up the verbiage that's there already, and says any physical distancing required by law, followed by the district to the fullest extent possible to allow continuation of in-person learning. So they were the proposed changes that I would like to put forward.
Mr. Bass, the changes that you requested, where you have where required by law in a couple of these situations, you say where required by law, proper masks may be used or what have you, can be discussed?
This is open discussion, which is why we're doing this, so if that's something that you wanted to put forth.
I have one other suggested change, and it's under item three G, where you're talking about the emergency use of Oxford Area School District facilities, in no way assumes implied consent by any individual. I think it should also say, and shall not be available for vaccination purposes during normal school hours. Under no circumstances shall vaccines be administered to students under the age of eighteen without both parents or legal guardians present.
Okay.
Apparently, under PA law, implied consent is not allowed. There has to be parental consent, so that's covered. The reason that I put the implied consent is there is the emergency use of the facility is because there's different coverages when there's an emergency, and I just wanted to cover any confusion there. But as far as regular school day or under regular law, that is not possible. district in our county, it's in their approved plan, for those that may be concerned that the verbiage being recommended may put it in jeopardy. And the verbiage under the universal and correct wearing of mask, it says mask will be required if required by law or governmental directive. When masks are required by law or governmental directive, the district will comply with all applicable requirements of such law or government directive. So I think that kind of covers and ensures that that verbiage has been accepted. So I think we have an argument if they choose not to accept our verbiage, that it's already been accepted in another district's Health and Safety Plan. Yeah. If you want to, if you want to make a mention. There are questions, Mr. Woods, I'll read the rest of what's under this. It says additionally, medical guidance issued by the Chester County Health Department, PA Department of Education and/or C D C will be strongly considered when determining whether mask will be required. The administration is authorized to implement, you know, this is where their piece is down here, that I wanted to recommend the change up on the front end, that says, the administration is authorized to implement the Health Department, PA Health Department, or Chester County Health Department's guidance as applicable. Face coverings will be available for staff and students, although individuals are expected to provide virtual. Information related to proper mask etiquette will be shared to assure that mouth and nose are covered with no gaps between the face and mask. Mask rates for students will be provided in accordance with C D C, PA Department of Health, Education, should the district adopt a mask optional approach. Unvaccinated staff will be required to wear a mask and commit to weekly antigen testing. So that's not stuff that I'm writing. That's the first part of that, because that wasn't in the question. Yep, the circle to here. None of the antibody testing.
So I just still want to make, one more point is that I think we really should think about where we reference the Chester County Department of Health. During this pandemic, the Chester County Department of Health gave up their rights to the state, and I think that that's important to understand when we put that in here, that the reason why we couldn't make a different decision, even if we wanted to, was that the Chester County Department of Health had to relinquish their rights.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So, sorry, I was just saying that I would strike through the Chester County Department of Health where you have it listed in the document. I would not include the Chester County Department of Health as the source for our decision-making. And the reason for that is because during the pandemic, they gave up their rights to the state, and it was no longer a decision made by the Chester County Department of Health.
Ms. Keyes, do these changes that we're looking at, do you think that they jeopardize the funding?
So, to be clear, that's what Mr. Patterson and I were discussing, what's proposed in green, in a change, I think needs to go further in most of what he read, and I believe that under masking would be fine, as far as the grant funding is concerned, because again, I want to point out to you, at the top column of two, sorry, three A, where it says ARPES requirement, universal correct wearing of masks, strategies, policies, and procedures for that. So I need, I need some strategies and procedures, whether we're wearing them or not is not the issue. The issue is the second, if you were to look at the language in green, it needs to go further, in my estimation, to include what that other school district included. Alternatively, as I made my recommendations over the last several months, I believe it could include the language, although more verbose, in what we have in our plan right now. And again, that's not, if we follow the history within these Health and Safety Plans, the Oxford Area School District made masking recommended to start the school year, and came under a mandate, and then went back to masking required, and when that mandate was lifted by the Supreme Court in December, we reverted back to the Health and Safety Plan. So there's no point, there's no point in time that we did not follow our Health and Safety Plan, because we were recommending masks. Now, to capitulate, it is verbose, it is looking, it is taking into account all facets of if a mandate were to come back law, or often called mandate were to come back law. And this, I believe, hits all the boxes for the grant and for a comprehensive Health and Safety Plan. Again, it would officially, that in three A, under universal correct wearing of masks, it's
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So, sorry, I was just saying that I would strike through the Chester County Department of Health where you have it listed in the document. I would not include the Chester County Department of Health as the source for our decision-making. And the reason for that is because during the pandemic, they gave up their rights to the state, and it was no longer a decision made by the Chester County Department of Health. Mr. Woods, if this change keeps that word looking at, do you think that they jeopardize the funding?
So, to be clear, that's what Mr. Patterson and I were discussing. What's proposed in green, you know, change, I think needs to go further in most of what he read. And I believe that under masking would be fine as far as the grant funding is concerned. Because again, I want to point out to you at the top column of two, sorry, 3A, where it says ARPS requirement, universal correct wearing of masks, strategies, policies and procedures for that. So I need, I need some strategies and procedures. Whether we're wearing them or not is not the issue. The issue is the second, if you were, to look at the language in green, it needs to go further in my estimation to include what that other school district included. Alternatively, as I made my recommendations over the last several months, I believe it could include the language, although more verbose, in what we have in our plan right now. And again, that's not, if we follow the district within its health and safety plan, the Oxford area school district made masking recommended to start the school year and came under a mandate and then went back to masking required. And when that mandate was lifted by the Supreme Court in December, we reverted back to the health and safety plan. So there's no point, there's no point in time that we did not follow our health and safety plan because we were recommending masks. Now, to fitulate, it is verbose. It is looking, it is taking into account all facets of if a mandate were to come back law or lawfully called mandate were to come back law. And this, I believe, hits all the boxes for the grant and for comprehensive health and safety plan. Again, I would fitulate that in 3A, under universal correct wearing of masks, the additional language that Mr. Patterson read should be included rather than just the green language that was added to this draft. Because that then gives us a strategy and a procedure. Whereas the current language, just required by law, proper face and shield, discuss with those wearing on school property would not give us those strategies and procedures. It's just a discussion, and I believe that could be kicked back based on, we're going to discuss it with you rather than give you the proper instruction on how to wear it, et cetera, et cetera, as Mr. Patterson read into the record. Again, just that first part, not the other part about the vaccines and antigen testing. So if you could understand what I'm stating there, if I go through each change, I have no issue with the LEA governing body implementing the approved plan. You don't want myself to have the ability to implement a mandate without calling a meeting, that's fine. It's just, we get three days notice and call a meeting and sit here and vote the plan. Yep. As far as distancing in B. Any physical distancing required by law can be followed by the district to the fullest extent possible, allowing continuation of personal learning. Again, I agree with that statement. However, that doesn't give me a strategy or procedure, and that's why we list the three, six, B, et cetera. So are you following my logic on this? When devising it, I need to check all those boxes off to be successful in this application. The next change is under E in contact tracing. Again, I believe we kept in collaboration with Chester County Department of Health and just struck and followed plan, any lawful required for you in Chester County, I believe that's fine. In G, again, I believe that's fine. LEA provide information regarding off-site clinics providing medical, we don't have to be involved in an on-site plan. So I don't see any problem with that changing. And then I, coordination of state and local health officials. I think that that would need to be changed just a hair. OASD may consider unlawful recommendations from state and lawful, or state and health officials when implementing the plan. I'm not sure you'd want to say may consider unlawful recommendations because of lawful mandate, for example, we would have to do. So I would suggest maybe some language changes there. And again, even if that later is called off by the Supreme Court, that's the judicial process at work, but we're under that mandate until said judicial process comes to conclusion. Again, just to state, if you want to reduce some of the language in the plan, that's not, if we add some of the language, I think it will be successful. As I recommended over the last several, several board meetings, I don't recommend a change to it if I think it's all encompassed. While it could be confusing. But I've made those statements now each time I've been.
So just so we're.
I just want to clarify, just in regards to some of the other districts. They adopted it, so, and just to be clear here, I know some folks have said that I approved the plan, and I know I actually did my research before speaking to join the board, like some others haven't done on this board. So before coming aboard, I can tell that, tell you that most districts adopted the plan from the CCIU. In that plan, it talked about masking based off of the different levels of infection in the county. We did not. If you look at our, the plan that the other board members adopted, it's miniscule compared to what other districts have. I don't feel comfortable taking out bits and pieces out of what they have and saying that we're doing what they are because we're not. We've essentially redlined this whole document, and we've put in purposeful ambiguity here as Mr. Woods has noted, to say may. Like, I'm okay with the whole parental choice thing. If you want to wear a mask, you don't want a mask, that's fine. But we should put in here, recommend it and put in the procedures. You don't want to wear a mask, that's fine. If there's an ethical mandate you have to do on transportation, put it in here. But all I see here is red flags. And frankly, Ms. Keys, if you don't want to adopt this, then don't have any sense in it. We should go to executive committee under the guise of safety, work this damn thing out. And Ms. Keys, if you don't want to come because you just want to redline the whole damn thing, then don't show up. We come when we vote. She's the one who did this. I talked about it earlier in this meeting. There are students who sat here the other day who talked about, instead of all this, they walked through, the one student, I walked through the hallway and I see trash cans collecting water. Bathroom's not working, flights in the hallway. We're not addressing any of that because of this bullshit that she mounted up. Even with the guise of safety, we'll work this thing out and not, because, guys, we can't work this out. It's like the public hasn't seen it. Will be named in executive committee because we're allowed to. We'll come out, we'll discuss it, we'll present it to the public, and the next meeting we vote on it. And then we move on, and we start figuring some things to help this whole and to fix some of those test scores that we just solved, that frankly, they are declining. I'm like, guys, I came from another work, another district, and I'm completely frustrated. We're not getting anything done, anything. We're, I'm done.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, I just would like to say that the comments that I made, they did come from input from the community. They were emailed to the whole board, I believe. So I just want to be clear that the items that I'm raising are not just my personal changes. These are revisions that were informed by the community as per this plan.
You can save your national politics and partisan politics for outside this district.
Here is, I'd like to make a motion at the table, the health and safety plan. Do you have a motion? Second? The discussion, as far as I see it, is that we should actually have a special meeting, sit down as Mr. Claus has presented, get this thing ironed out, release it for public comment, and then we can vote on it in a meeting after that. That sounds like a very wise course of action to take. That's my area of discussion. Is there any further discussion? All right, we have a motion to table on floor. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Policy revisions, second reading, Mr. Woods.
Thank you. This is, is the second presentation of the policy. Seventy-three twenty, homeless students.
This is not something that we're voting on this evening. This is merely just a discussion on changes or comments to the second reading of policy number seven-three-two-zero. Any discussion?
I think the only thing that I would like to raise is that this particular policy was not extended within the outline of our policy revision schedule. I know that it was stated that it was done based on the audit was conducted. But what I wanted to understand was what is the urgency in getting this done now when the audit was done back in April of 2021? I guess I just was wondering if it was so urgent to do, why wasn't it done following that audit?
So we brought it in front of the policy committee in a timely fashion as we worked through all nuances of the recommendation. And I'm uncertain, I don't have it in front of me right now. When we actually received the recommendations from the federal auditor, it may have been that the audit was conducted in April of 2021. And so we received the actual recommendations, could have been later. And I'm unclear what that date is, but we'll find that date. And then obviously, we recessed for the July, the month of July. And then we have September, October, November. And I'm, again, unclear when we received those recommendations. But it was up for second reading at our January meeting. We don't do any business at the reorganization in December. So that means it would have been up for the first reading at the November meeting. So it seems to me that if it was completed in April, we probably received it in November, and that gone through, maybe additions to the existing policy and got it in front of board in a timely fashion. But we'll get those dates for you, Ms. Keys.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to know, why do we have a policy revision schedule if we revise policies outside of that schedule?
Okay, good question. So we have a policy revision schedule that takes each broad section of our policy over the year, so maybe four thousand series in any given year, it's five thousand series or six thousand series. And each year, we go through and look to revise any of those policies. So that's one thing. Second answer is that any time throughout the year, we can pick and choose policies like the homeless policy to revise after we receive input from audit. Or some of our other policies, there may be a mandate at the state that has changed or policy guidance from an organization that has changed or a law that may have changed that we need to then go and edit our policies. And when we edit the actual policy, it takes three readings. If we edit administrative procedures of policy, it just takes one reading. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion about policy seventy-three twenty? Copy the policies listed, Elizabeth, administrative building, 125 Altar Lane, also PA First Amendment Act of common policies can be viewed on the website at www.oxfordast.org. Public is encouraged to stop and read these policies before visiting the website. Closing items, correspondence, Mr. Cooney?
We have none.
Any changes to the calendar before I go through it? Tuesday, March eighth, facilities and safety committee, 6:00 PM, administrative building. Tuesday, March eighth, athletics and student activities committee, 6:15 PM, administrative building. Tuesday, March eighth, policy committee, 6:30 PM, administrative building. Tuesday, March eighth, 2022 work session, 7:00 PM, administrative building. Tuesday, March fifteenth, 2022 budget finance committee, 6:30 PM, administrative building. Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, administrative building. I'd like to, is anybody, would be okay to have a executive session after the meeting on March eighth to discuss this health and safety plan? So we can get something done? Anybody have any issues with that, or can we all attend? Executive session, March eighth, hopefully, right around 8:00 PM, administrative building. Follow-up, community questions or concerns, Mr. Cooney? The German, do I have a motion? Second? Each German, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, each German.
Hold on, thank you, everyone here. Jim wants to say hi. Nash is on there.
Who's that?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, I couldn't see, I couldn't see anything.
Yeah, I don't know why. Hold on.
Hi, everyone.
All right, thank you, guys.